Looks like we've got a quorum here, so I'll go ahead and call the meeting of the West Des Moines Community Schools Board of Education to order. And welcome all those participants visiting with us online. And I guess I'll just turn the conversation over to you, Dr. Amy. I know we're gonna have some information here. I guess Peggy, you probably want to take roll call, don't you? You want to, you want to do it, just call our names, please. Thank you.
Thanks. Please answer present when your name is called. Liz Cox.
Present.
Jennifer Yule Wells.
Here.
Elizabeth Brennan.
Here.
Jill Catan Johnson.
Here.
Lonnie Daphne.
Here.
Jeff Hicks.
Here.
Vicki Poole.
Here.
Thanks.
Thank you, Peggy. Okay, now you, Dr. Amy. Sorry, thanks Peggy.
That's all right. Thanks, Liz. I am going to attempt to share my screen. Which? Hopefully you can all see that. Yes, great. So tonight, our workshop we added is to really go through our recommendation that we're asking you to approve tonight at the board meeting. We'll go through really specific towards option two, and feel free to ask any questions as we go forward. So first, I just want to remind us that we have children, students, all watching and listening closely to what we're doing and saying. And so it's really important for us as the adults to set good examples for them. To know how to help navigate through these challenging times, because they are challenging times for all of us. And if we can be good role models for our, for our young people. So as I think probably you all are aware, but we've had different inputs as we've been thinking through the different and multiple plans that we've had to put forth. So we've had guidance from Iowa Department of Public Health. We've looked at guidance from the CDC. We've had guidance from our Department of Education. We've had guidance from the Governor's Office, so the state. We've also had guidance from Polk County Health. And we've had guidance from legal. So we've, we've had lots of guidance over the last several months. And all of that guidance has helped shape our plans that we put forth to you over the last several months. Also, I want to just really hone in on, I guess, Senate File 2310. So at the end of June, so on June 25th, in one of our webinars with the DE, the Department of Education, they articulated to us the different pieces of Senate File 2310, and that's really about online learning. And you can see I have different bullet points here to help you understand a little bit about Senate File 2310. But it was at that time when we heard that the Senate file said, and if you look at that first bullet point, that it was provided for in-person instruction, and that in-person instruction is presumed the method of instruction. That really told school districts that we have to do whatever we can to have in-person instruction in the fall. That's how it was articulated to us at, at the, at the meeting on the 25th. And it was after that that our Return to Learn team then developed Hybrid Option Two. And the reason we developed Hybrid Option Two is we really felt as though it was important to meet what was being asked of us here that was passed, but also to respond to what we heard from our families is that there would be some people who really do not feel comfortable sending their kids back, and that we should consider an online option for them. And so as we formulated that plan and put that plan then out to our community, and as we looked at the data, and we'll look at that again here tonight, we really felt as though Option Two is what we're bringing forward as for a recommendation really met the Senate File 23 intentions, as well as responding to what our community is asking. So for some choice, so that if I feel comfortable sending my kids to school, I can make that choice with, of course, the mitigation strategies, and then also if I don't and I need my son or daughters to be at home, that I have that option as well. I also want to point out the other bullet on this slide is that last bullet. That it is up to the school board and our school district that when we have cases within our system, that we will determine if and when we close, and if it's a classroom, if it's a building, or if it's our district, and then we move to that online learning. So that's really up to us. We have that local control. This slide is really just a reminder that no matter if it's the fully continuous online learning plan, either of our hybrid plans or a fully face-to-face plan, that all of our plans that we submitted to the Department of Education have and meet all seven of these different areas. So that we had to consider as we were working through those plans, infrastructure, health and safety, all of the standards, social emotional behavioral health, how will we meet the needs of our special education students? And then what data that we will continue to look at to determine when we need to shift in plans and/or are those plans being effective as we move through the fall semester. So now I'm going to shift to the parent survey responses and share that data with all of you. So in the parent survey response, we asked some demographic information, so you can see who responded to our survey. And just a reminder, we had 5,600 responses on our parent survey. You can see which building their son or daughter would be enrolled in for the 2021 school year. So a good cross-section across our district.
Hey Lisa, real quick on that, the, is that Stillwell? It's a 22%? That just struck me as, that seemed like that'd be over 1,000 students, and that seemed to exceed the population at Stillwell. Was I?
Yeah, so I, I think that might be Valley High School, and Stillwell might be the 5.2%. Those purples are kind of the others.
I couldn't tell if it was going in order, because it looked like the colors were maybe in order, but maybe not.
Yeah, I haven't looked that closely. I don't know if Mike.
Yeah, because the purple of Valley shows 9.2%.
Yeah. It, it, just when I saw the 22.4% for Stillwell with like 5,300 respondents, it seemed like that would be... Again, I, I don't want to derail the conversation. I just wondered if that was something we had looked at.
Improperly coded based on coloring, would be my guess, but.
Well, and it could also be, I mean, we had, if you had more than one student that you responded twice, right? So you filled out the survey for both, like if you had two sons or a daughter and a son, or multiple, now that'd be interesting to all be at Stillwell, but that's a good question to look into.
Yeah, I didn't want to derail. I just, that jumped out, out at me, so.
No, that's right. And then here you can see just the breakdown for grade level. And this question asked, you know, how comfortable are you sending your students back safe? So how safe do you feel sending your student back to school for the 2021 school year? And so you can see that cross-section of our respondents. So we had about 30% total in that one, two, or 28% actually when you add it up. And when you think nationally, as I've read some of the research reports, they're saying anywhere between 20 and 30% of families will most likely not send their child back to school because they're not feeling safe. So I don't know that that tells us anything except for that our respondents here are in alignment with what research has said in the past few months. Again, and as we look at the parent survey response here, we asked, again, knowing that we would follow our mitigation strategies, and we had those attached, I would feel most comfortable with this option. Again, we were trying to find out where our families would, would want to see either fully in-person, what percent would be going online to help us determine how we might have to staff. And so you can see is that breakdown from no preference to fully online. And I know that even with our recommendation, that there will still be most likely shifts from this, but this gave us a good starting point to see what percent would want to be back full-time versus what percent would want to stay fully online. And then, as you know, as we've been talking about busing, we just really wondered what, what that might look like for this fall, so we wanted to ask the question about how, how our families are planning to get their sons and daughters to school. So you can see the breakdown there, that many plan to drive. But we still do have about 20% that are planning to take the bus. And I know this has been a week or so ago when we talked to our Director of Transportation, but she felt like that was in alignment and moving towards what she would expect to be transporting. Are there any?
Hey Lisa, yeah, before you move, can you go back a few slides? So, and this is Lonnie, by the way. The, go, the, where the, the demographics broke out as to who responded, but that, that one, go back one more, or up one, sorry.
Here?
So those were the demographics, but then you asked the how comfortable? Do we know what the demographics broke out in that? Since we asked the question, did we get this, this here on the scale of one to five by demographics as well?
So I don't have that tonight. I'm going to look to Mike to see. I think we could pull that data out. I just don't have that tonight. Is that correct, Mike?
Yeah, we can look at that result by building. So, and we can look at their response here by that subgroup.
I'm just wondering if we asked the question and we have the demographic breakout in their survey responses on this, the, the level of comfort, I, I would be interested in knowing what that was by demographic.
Thanks for asking that question, and I'm sorry we don't have that tonight, but we can certainly pull that.
Okay, thank you.
For, yep, to share with you later. Any other questions or comments on the parent survey? Okay, so then as we move to the teacher survey responses, you can see again, here, here's the primary building where those who responded to this survey primarily work, where they're home-based, I guess, because we have some teachers who travel between buildings. I should note too, that we had 949 responses, but as we dug into that data, we noticed that we had 838 unique responses, so what that tells us is there are about 111 individuals who responded more than once to the survey. Just interesting information. And then you can see we asked the question about barriers that they're anticipating that would impact when they're instructing during required continuous learning online. So this is when we'd be fully virtual. And just trying to get a sense of either what, what do we need to still provide to our staff? What barriers would keep them from being effective on continuous learning online? What can we do to mitigate some of these concerns that might be there? And then here, I, I wanted to spend a little bit of time on this slide. So when we asked this question, we were very careful that we wanted to make sure that we weren't asking to vote on and get a top vote getter. We were really wanting to know, and we asked them to check all that apply. We're really trying to get a sense of comfort level from our staff and returning to the classroom. And so Hybrid Option One, Two, and Fully Face-to-Face, all are requiring folks to be in our buildings. And then the Required Continuous Learning remotely is the only one not. So as we stepped back and looked at the data when we received this, knowing that it was really comfort level and that they could check all that apply. So as a staff member, they might have checked two or three of these. We were really looking at like, we have 34% or 312, and it's really not good to even say percentages, because we know that multiple people could have checked more than one. But 312 folks checked out of the total of 949 responses that they really didn't feel comfortable coming back in the building. So we were looking at what percent isn't coming, comfortable coming back in the building, and trying to get a sense of comparing that with what percent of our families might want that fully online. So we have a few more staff members, you know, that may not feel comfortable returning compared to that 18%. But again, that's all going to shift as we move forward with our planning and ask people to select one of the options if, if we move forward tonight.
Can I ask, it says a teacher survey, so was this primarily just teachers, or was it all staff that?
So we did send it, thank you for asking that, and probably should have titled that slide differently. So it, it was more than staff, or more than teachers. It was all staff. So we had some custodians, some bus drivers. But when we dug, dug into the results, the results are primarily our teaching staff that responded. So overwhelmingly out of the 838, and I don't really want to put Mike on the spot that we could say specifically how many were teachers, but the, the majority were teachers.
All right, thank you.
And then finally, the, the last question that we asked was really about how best do they feel positively connected with the school and/or district, and what ways helps them feel positively connected? So again, just trying to think about that social emotional piece for our staff as well, and how can we ensure that they feel connected to work? No matter what, what model that we will be in, starting in the fall. Any questions about the staff survey before I go into the specific district recommendations?
Lisa, is this survey really the, the only mechanism we've done to get feedback from like the classroom teachers? And do you, I mean, is there other things we've done to kind of get, either drilling down or getting more feedback from, from the teachers?
Yeah, so thanks for that question, Jeff. So early on in the, I don't know if it was in end of May or early June, but we had a survey that we asked for teacher feedback about how spring went, what professional development needs they had, et cetera. We also had in June, all of the building leadership teams give feedback on our plans. And then Dr. Side had, has met regularly with the WDMEA and received feedback from our West Des Moines Education Association leadership. And then we also had a time where the leadership had requested that they're get more feedback from our DMAC teachers. So if you remember, when we went to voluntary online learning in the spring, our DMACs, our high school DMAC teachers went fully online. So the association had asked if we would circle back with them and get feedback from them to help us with our continuous online learning plan, which Shane Scott did circle back with them. So there were multiple other times, and, and I can open it up to either Dr. Side or Michelle if you'd like to share any specifics around that feedback piece.
The other avenue that I would like to just remind folks of is that throughout the spring, our Directors of Curriculum, as well as our Special Education and ESL Directors, were continually having meetings with our teachers and asking for that feedback. They were having PLC meetings together virtually. And so the information that was provided during those times was also used within the Return to Learn meetings as well. So I will say that I appreciate the WDMEA leadership and the ability that they have had to meet with us. We've tried to be really responsive. We have regular meetings during the school year. We don't typically meet during the summertime, and certainly not to the extent that we have recently. So I appreciate their willingness to make themselves available morning, afternoon, evening. So we have been able to share information, ask for feedback, ask for questions, and, and continue that dialogue. So thank you.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to, so I'm just going to really walk through our recommendations. And so first off, we are requiring, or our recommendation is to require all staff and visitors that they have to wear face coverings when they're inside our building. So face coverings, you'll see in a subsequent slide that we define those for you. We also are going to require all students to wear face coverings as well when they're onsite in their learning. And then we are recommending for the 2021 school year to start in Hybrid Option Two. As we think about those face coverings.
This is Jen. Can I go back just a second? I'm a little delayed, sorry. And it's actually even back regarding the question that Jeff asked. You don't have to move the slide or anything. But you mentioned all the feedback that you received. It sounds like you received a lot. How would you say it compared to what the recommendation is that's being put forth?
Well, you know, I think it's similar to what we've received in emails. So it kind of all over the board, where some are very pleased with recommendation, and some would like a different. So I think it's really all over the board. When we read comments, and you know, we've asked, when we talk about feedback, we've asked very specific along the way about certain things. So when the building leadership teams gave feedback, they were giving feedback around the plans for and the schedules that we would put in place for Required Continuous Learning and for the Hybrid approach. And so it was very specific that way, and I would have to defer to Michelle to talk more.
Yeah, when leadership teams met, we, because we'd been diligently drafting guidance to support that required continuous learning, thinking about different roles, thinking about special education. And leadership teams went through that guidance and those virtual schedules and all those pieces, and provided notice, wonders, and then suggestions. And I would say, you know, Jen, to your question, not having it right in front of me, that narrative of suggestions and wonders and questions very much were around some of the details, maybe we won't even know until we actually approve a model and, and move forward. Some of those questions, like if this happens, what will recess look like? If this happens, what will that look like? And then in addition to that, specifically with elementary, because the use of Canvas and, and some of those online practices are very different than what it looks like every day in our classrooms. Lee has been working with our teacher leaders and our online learning coordinators on a, like a blueprint course that would really support some consistency. And so just, I think I want to say even last week, I don't know, Lee, you can tell me. And had a couple of different sessions where there were teachers that signed up from every building, just to give feedback so that we could continue to improve what that looks like and what that support looks like in that online, online space. Knowing that that work probably will never be complete, we're always going to try and shift and improve and make sure that we're responding to some of those questions and needs.
Right. I would also add that I think the feedback that we've heard too is around those mitigation strategies. And that's been something that has been top of mind for staff members as well as families. But I would say that's what we heard, and Dr. Side could probably speak more specifically to that, but that's what we've heard.
The other, oh, sorry, Lisa, the other piece too, within some of the suggestions and wonders, aligned to like some of those barriers that were questions within the survey, because some of those themes kind of popped out of things that were worries, I would say for, for staff.
Lisa, I know that you and others have spent a significant amount of time collaborating with officials from public health. You've been on webinars with the state health department. You've had face-to-face, well, not face-to-face, but virtual meetings with our own public health department. You've been in regular communication with them, not only leading up to graduation, but of course, all of this as well. Can you just provide some information to others that might not know of, like, the context of those conversations? And just a little more background to, I, what I really want you to do is have a chance to talk about why we're recovering, why we're requiring face masks, what, you know, what, why you're bringing the Hybrid Option Forward as a safe way to assemble.
Thanks, Liz. Sure. So I'm going to just.
Could I jump in? And I just want to add, I, I'm getting some texts from people that I think you can clarify in your response to Liz, if I may. And it says, everyone seemed to think that Hybrid Two was really an extension of Hybrid One and would be an AB schedule. And lastly, apparently there are some students that believe that they would be able to pick classes, some to take in person and some to take online. So maybe if you could incorporate all, lots of information there, but it all seems to go together.
Thanks. And if I don't get it, circle it back for me, please. So I will try to remember all of that. So I am going to move the slide just to to share for a moment. You know, when we think about face coverings, and we really, we talked long and hard about this. And our definition of face coverings is it could be a face shield, it could be a face mask, it could be the gator, you know, a bandana. So we, we truly, sometimes when we're trying to really have that vernacular be face covering, so that we don't only say mask. Because we do have that expectation differently at the elementary level than the secondary level. And when we got to the point of requiring, you know, that really came from a lot of conversation among our team, of course. But after reading what the CDC says about face coverings, after having conversations with Polk County Health, and you know, it was reiterated again, most recently in my meeting with Polk County Health on Friday, that the mitigation, that masks or face coverings is a really good mitigation strategy. As we think about the droplets and, and how far they can travel and so forth, and then, and then our, you know, when I'm speaking, there's, I guess I'll call it my bubble, that could then impact someone if I'm closer, you know, than that six feet social distancing. And that how important it is when to wear masks at all times, but when you're interacting with others. But for certain, when you can't guarantee that six feet of social distancing. And so of course, their, their recommendation to us is to really consider any time that we would have groups of students, more than 10, et cetera, in a, in a space that we would, we would require that use of a face covering, because it is not only protecting that individual who's wearing it, but it's protecting the others who they are around. And so it just became very clear to our entire Return to Learn leadership team that this was a, a fairly simple mitigation strategy that we could put in place that would protect our adults and our students, all, all those who will be in our buildings when we, when we start school in the fall. So as we think about our schedules and well, maybe I'll just move here. So as we, as we look at Hybrid Option Two, and I don't know that I would ever say trying to answer Dr. Poole's question around it being an extension of Hybrid Option One. So Hybrid Option Two did come, as I said earlier, the thought process around that came when we heard Senate File 2310, basically telling schools that the primary mode of instruction needed to be face-to-face, or that in-person instruction. And we knew that even after talking with Polk County Health, and again, reading CDC, and then what researchers, as I've read through and listened to webinars from people from across the US, that we are going to have families, either the, the mother or father, the guardian has an underlying health condition, or our students may have underlying health conditions. And so that, that idea of coming back to face-to-face or onsite learning wasn't going to be possible for them. So we knew we needed to have an alternate approach for those families who would choose that approach. And so we really felt like we were being told we need to go fully onsite. We didn't feel comfortable based on all of the information that we had, conversations we had been in, information that we had read, looking at other models of schools that had already started back in other countries, that we really needed to provide another option. So that's when we came up with Hybrid Option Two, embedded that through our team. So we didn't see it as an extension of the AB model. And we also really didn't see it as I might take half of, or part of my classes online and part of my classes in person. We really thought that we saw it as. We really thought that we saw it as it's true hybrid approach in the sense of if you want onsite, you select onsite. If you want that online continuous learning, then you select that online continuous learning. And at first, we didn't put a time limit on it in our discussions. And then we got to talking that we really needed, as we think about the scheduling and the complexity of how that all works, that we really needed to have that have a timeframe so that we could staff and create schedules with the best interest of students in mind. And so that's why we then said we needed to know by a date of the end of July so that we could be ready for August 26th and that you would be selecting that option for that first semester. So I want to pause for a moment and make sure if I, Liz and Vicky, did I touch base on your questions? There might be more around the schedule as we move forward, but-
Yeah, I think you covered most of what I just, I feel like people were beginning to think that Option 2 popped out of nowhere. And I think you have explained how it, it came to be. And I suspect that you're going to be explaining how the block scheduling is really going to work and how the intermix is going to come. So I'll look forward to that as well.
Yep, yep.
Lisa, can I ask a question? I had a parent text me, this is Jill. Once again, in our education world, we're using some acronyms like BLT, PLC for getting feedback. And I'm not sure everybody who's a viewer of our workshop tonight might understand. So Michelle, when you were talking about getting feedback from teachers, the BLT is the Building Leadership Team, have they been working since June to get input?
Have they been working since June to get input? We met with leadership teams from each building in June, partially to work on school improvement plans, thinking about where we were with closure and, and some of that building time. We incorporated specific time to get feedback from those representatives around some of the guidance that actually you all saw about the same time because it was all coming together quickly and virtual schedules and highlighting those pieces like some of that guidance to help support IEP teams. That guidance is where we asked them and had them work in small groups where they worked across buildings. And, and we had four different sessions, so we had, or actually two different days with different sessions with elementaries and then 912 and then junior highs to get their feedback around that. And we left it very open, so what did you notice? What are you wondering about, which is very helpful? And then what suggestions do you have? And from there, there were just a lot of the things that we talked about that have come out and the things that are still, I think, wonders and things that are, people are, you know, worried about or wondering about or curious about or suggestions around scheduling, suggestions like Lisa said, the face covering, things like that that emerged as well.
Yeah, so just again, because people, you know, our language and how, so if someone's on the BLT, the Building Leadership Team, they met with you and then they would feedback from other people in their building? Is that how that usually works? Just, I don't think people understand how our structure, I, we, I understand, I've been in a school, right?
Sure, usually-
Teachers were listed opportunities to give feedback.
Correct, and those are, those are teachers within each building and typically are working with their administrator. And then at times, we also have a representative from each building that serves as a district kind of leadership team that throughout the school year we're meeting primarily around our professional learning. It supports our, like, we have representation from Drake and the AA with us during those times. But yes, primarily with the leadership teams, they're off contract. We compensate them for that. And I think we've shared with all of you as well that we had a number of opportunities this summer to compensate teachers to continue that learning, just to keep building our capacity for that online learning based on a lot of that feedback that we got in the spring around needs from teachers, but also that feedback from families. And all of that played into the virtual schedules, the kind of guidance that we felt like teachers might need to best support students if we're in that continuous online learning environment.
Hey Lisa, can I ask two quick questions? Just going back to the, the Senate File 2310, I imagine there might be some folks listening in that will say, "Well, if Des Moines is able to do the, the two days a week, then it doesn't sound like the 2310 prohibits that." And so I just wanted to give you the opportunity to maybe speak to that. And then I think the other question, maybe this is the right time or not to address it, but with the Hybrid Option 1, I mean, the, the feedback I got from folks that liked that idea was they thought, well, it gives folks a couple of things. One, it gives folks, the parents, the chance to see what online learning looks like. It gives you a chance to establish that online learning so that if we do have to go full remote at some point in time, there's kind of a baseline, how that will happen already baked in. You have fewer people in the classroom, so it makes the social distancing easier. Maybe it gives the teachers more one-on-one time with, with students. I guess all of those things, and there's, there's other reasons, I think, why people like the, the Option 1. But when you looked at those, why Option 2 versus the Hybrid Option 1?
Yeah, so let me first respond to the DMPS, so Des Moines Public Schools. They, so the state of Iowa has four districts or four models that they have approved for online learning. That would be Des Moines Public Schools, Cedar Rapids. Those are the two school districts that have that. And then there's CAM and I don't remember the fourth one. I don't know if anybody can remember the fourth other, Fully Online. So there's two Fully Online. Clayton Ridge, Peggy could remember that. So Clayton Ridge and CAM are fully online programs. And then two school districts, Cedar Rapids and Des Moines Public, have already been approved by the Department of Education to offer an online school. So they have the ability to have students online because they're already approved, where our continuous, online continuous learning that's required is approved if we have to go into a closure. It's not like we're an approved online provider, if that makes sense. But that, that is really the difference between, between Des Moines Public and us, for example. And then why Option 2 versus Option 1? I mean, truly, I feel as though there's two reasons from my perspective. One, it is, is giving our, our families, so as we looked at the data back from our families, and I know we didn't get 100% response, but as we look at that data, we have 47, 48% of our families saying they want that five days a week. And we really felt like we should respond if we have that need, that they want to be in school five days a week. And we know that we can put those mitigation strategies in place to help that be a safe environment. Now, if, if 50% stay online, then we will be somewhat, or you know, in that 50/50 hybrid approach. So we don't know that yet until we ask families to select, to know what percent will be face-to-face five days a week and what, what percent will be online. The other pieces, realistically, I feel as though, based on all of the feedback that I've received from listening to the Department of Education around Senate File 2310, I've talked to legal and other superintendents that we really felt as though our Hybrid Option 1, we may be told, isn't a viable option because we're not that required, we don't, we don't, we're not approved, required online school. Maybe our interpretation of 2310, along with our attorneys and others, is not accurate, but that is the information. And other superintendents, we've all had this conversation. We really felt like when that was passed, that primary mode needs to be face-to-face. So those would be my two reasons, Jeff.
Okay, no, that, thank you. If, so if this Hybrid Option 2 was approved by the board, would you envision that the next two weeks would be, two, three weeks would really be spent putting kind of the deep, all, all the detail to that, getting other input from teachers about how that would, just kind of all the, the details so that parents can then say, "Okay, this is what kind of the options are," which then in turn will probably help inform how that plan? Because it seems like there's just a lot of moving parts in terms of, do you have enough subs? Do you have enough teachers to cover the remote learning? Are teachers expected to cover both the children that are doing remote learning and in person? Is that what you expect the next two weeks, two, three weeks of kind of work focused on?
Yeah, so if we, we'll go continue through the presentation and I think we're gonna answer some of those questions right there. Yes, absolutely, so. But continue to ask. So we are asking parents to request, we felt by July 31st, so that we can continue that, the staffing piece, it's really around that staffing piece. And we're really asking families that if they want to participate in that required online continuous learning for that first semester, that they would contact us by July 31st. New families would be given the option when they enroll. And then our, we've had some questions around calendars, so we have not changed our calendar for this year. So the approved calendar that the board approved last fall is the calendar that we are moving forward with this year. So we're starting with students on August 26th, having those, that regular calendar as we've put out. And then for those students who would be onsite, we are proposing regular bell time. So we're not adjusting, we're not proposing to adjust our school day for those who are onsite at this time.
Lisa, if I could pause there for just one second, please? Because I think Vicky had a question on the previous slide. I want to make sure she had a chance.
Thank you, my, my texts, I'm having trouble keeping up with. And I really appreciate everybody wanting answers to their questions. And so if I'm gonna ask something and you have, I likely have it in your presentation, just say, you know, just wait a minute. One of the things that comes to mind is, yeah, you've talked about meeting with, Michelle talked about meeting with leadership teams from the different buildings and everything. And, and I personally would never ask any teacher to do anything that I wouldn't do myself. I, and I suspect you have also met with the teacher leadership, with the WDMEA, to explain where we think we're headed and the rationale for why we're headed that way. That's, that's my first thing. So if you want to take that, or if you want to wage, up to you.
Yeah, so as far as the WDMEA leadership, I mean, Dr. Seid, I'll, I'll throw that to you first and then I'll, I'll follow up at the end there.
So thank you. We have been meeting regularly around return to learn, asking, here's the information that we've talked about at our return to learn meeting, at our administrator meeting that is virtual, when we've had that related to return to learn, asking what questions do they have? What questions are you hearing? So we've tried to respond throughout this time. When Dr. Ramey talked about the guidance that we received from the Department of Education, I believe that was June 25th, which if I recall is a Thursday. We met with the adminis, with our return to learn team June 29th, which would have been that next Monday. Tuesday then, for example, was a meeting in order to provide an update to our WDMEA leadership. And so, for example, last week, I think I met with our leadership and guys, three to four-ish times probably, and sometimes multiple times during a day. So trying to address questions, some questions we don't have answers to because this is, as we all know, it's a work in progress and sometimes it feels pretty messy and sometimes that's because it is. And so we're providing the, the information that we have and the best information that we have at the time.
I also add to that, something that isn't being said and is probably only known by very few people, but the sands have shifted quite a bit over the last four weeks in the guidance that districts have received from the Department of Education. And what Carol's referring to is some guidance that came, you know, well, we had to have our plan ready July 1st. So just want the community to really be aware of the pivot and the timeframe that our district had to sort of implement some new guidelines that were put on the table literally days before our plan was due. Again, our plan was due to the Department of Education July 1st. Their guidance came out the Thursday before that. So I really appreciate the kind of communication that's been going on between not only the WDMEA, but our administrators and the, the transportation and nutrition. I mean, there were a lot of people that needed to be involved in those conversations. And I think it's commendable that our leadership has been as open and accessible to all of those groups, which are important to our school community, on top of, you know, hosting a town hall meeting, you know, and walking us through this presentation once again. So thank you, Dr. Seid and all of your team for that transparency. Do you have more, Vicky?
No, I would, I would echo what you're saying now. I think that there are so many questions to be answered that it is tough to even anticipate what all of those questions are. And I know I've had conversations with a lot of people in the last few days trying to get answers to questions. And I, some of you already know the answers to the questions and just hadn't thought that that's something that was important to lay out there. But I anticipate hearing the rest, so I'll just hang on to what else I have and I'll pop in as needed. Thank you so much.
And I, the only thing I would add there to what Dr. Seid had said, you know, as the recommendation came out Friday in our board materials and then there were questions that came and some concern, along with others, that said, "Hey, thanks for, we really appreciate this." But we heard that our teachers, there were some concern from our teachers. And so I, I appreciate, you know, the leadership with Chantel and Bee, we met yesterday. So on a Sunday afternoon, Dr. Seid, Michelle and myself met with, you know, two of the three WDME leaders to determine what is it? Because Dr. Seid had just met with them Friday at some point and there weren't the concerns that were all of a sudden bubbling up. So then just trying to, for us to be listeners and understand what is it that is needed? And so I just appreciate that the willingness of them to, on a Sunday afternoon, jump on a Google Meet and, and talk through that with us. And so we really wanted to be, and hopefully we are, that being really more, very specific in some of the questions that they have, is that next level of work? So once we know a direction, we can start doing those plans like, that are actually at the building level. Like, I won't be involved personally in recess plans. I don't put recess schedules together, but I do, in this situation, in our conversations with our return to learn team and our administrative leadership team, I did say, "I would like you to think differently about what recess looks like" and not just allowing, you know, two full grade levels, for example, out at recess at the same time and not thinking about cohorts of students. So that big umbrella about recess, but then the details about what a schedule looks like or what the special schedules look like at a building, that's really the building work, which connects to what Jeff was asking earlier as well. So when we get to, you know, now to some more details about what that kind of onsite's gonna look like, so we think, we believe through the K-8, so elementary and junior high, as well as our Walnut Creek, that we may have to adjust staff to accommodate the learning needs of students who are wanting that fully continuous online learning environment. And what we mean by that is our goal would be at these, the K-8 and Walnut Creek, that at those levels, if possible, that we would not have teachers both having to teach in that onsite environment and the continuous online environment, that we would adjust staffing so that those students who are online have a teacher who is dedicated to them online. But until we know what numbers are selecting and looking at that, you know, like if we have enough kindergarten students to have a section of online, we, and that we're reducing that in the class, you know, in person, then we take that person and he or she would be teaching fully online for us. Differently at Valley High School and Valley Southwoods, though, because of certifications and just the number of courses we offer, that may not be totally possible. If it's possible because of the number of sections we might have of a science class or a social days class, we would try to do that as much as possible. But knowing with certification and trying to keep the number of preps down for, for our staff, we're, we're looking, as we talk with our building level administrators, we would move to fully an A-B block schedule, so that's alternating days. So we would have odd periods, for example, on Monday, so 1, 3, 5, 7, 90 minutes in length. And then even periods on Tuesday, so 2, 4, 6, 8, that same length. When you think about that, the reason that we moved then to say, you know, a full block schedule, alternating days, is so that if we have students who have to join the class remotely, then, not that the teacher teaching the class would have two separate lesson plans, but that, that student could, could join the class remotely and then be a part of- and then be a part of that class as the teacher's teaching whatever that content area is. And just, we would be asking teachers to remember, hey, you also have this 2, 3, 4, whatever the number may be of students online and including them in that, that lesson. And so it could be a situation where as you're having some group work in the classroom, then me as the teacher pops over to my online kiddos and do some small group with them as others are working. We are also, we've asked Brian Abeling and our tech group, and I really appreciate all the work they've done this spring, to purchase as many as we can get. They're called either the Swivel or the Meeting Monkey so that we have the technology. Like right now, we, I want the board to know, we do have the technology to have a student remote into class. But it's similar as to like, I'm sitting in front of my computer right now for this. It's like that where with this Meeting Monkey, we have that then as the teacher, I'm being, moving around the room and I'm online able to follow that teacher as he or she is even moving around the room. Michelle, our teaching and learning, do you want to add any more details to either of these bullets?
I would. And first of all, I, I just want to give a shout out to our building administrators because they are solution oriented. It's taking a lot of problem solving, talking, looking at numbers, all kinds of things. With that A B block, when we think about a student accessing their courses remotely, being able to jump in on four courses during a day versus all day long, eight, eight different periods potentially, that, that's helpful, right? It gives the teacher more time, as Dr. Ramey said, to interact with students or for students to interact with each other. When you think of small group, group work and things like that. The other piece that we talked about when we thought about the 912 on an A B block is it reduces the number of transitions a student would have during the day as well. When we think about, you know, decreasing, you know, passing times and that kind of thing.
Hey Lisa, I'm sorry to interrupt. I, I noticed there's some people had their hands up. I just wanted to remind people online that in board workshops, only the, the board members are allowed to participate. The public are welcome to observe, but only board members may participate in the workshop. Those that may want to share questions or whatever, they're welcome to contact us by email or join us at our board meeting or have open forum and listen there, but we're not able to respond to questions during this time. So I don't know if there's anything more I need to comment about that. But I wanted to make sure that the community heard that this is not a community forum or anything like that. This is a scheduled board workshop and according to open meetings laws, we have to abide by those. I'll toss it to Jesse if I'm forgetting something. She's shaking her head no and winking. So we're good. Liz Brennan, you have a question.
Thank you. And, and maybe you're going to get to this, Lisa, but what about lab classes? Or band or choir orchestra, things like that? How will they work? Or maybe you don't know yet and that's fine too.
Well, and so we, I will tell you that we started a conversation today at our return to learn leadership team around music, so band, vocal orchestra, P E, art, all of those type classes. I don't know if Shane Scott or Michelle, you want to talk about the lab type classes?
Yeah, I'll let Shane jump in because he can speak to how some of that happened in the spring. I can tell you that if we move forward with this option and we know our numbers and we have students online and they need some of those experiences that are, that need to happen face to face, we're going to have to get creative in thinking about what that looks like. Shane, do you want to share a little bit about what the spring looked like?
Sure. Yeah. In particular situations where students might not have the equipment, even though they could continue some of those lab-based experiences at home, we make, we made arrangements to make sure there's a safe transition of that equipment, whether it be photography equipment, anything that we can push out to students. There will be certain situations where we'll have to think through, how do we put a welding torch in a kid's hand, use a metal lathe? There's this various equipment that requires oversight over an instructor in order for operation and meet the standards or the competencies for those courses. But certainly if, as we move forward with a plan for implementing return to learn, we'll be working with administrators throughout our system to identify a best way in order to safely bring those students in so they can have a portion of that lab hands, hands-on based experience as possible.
One of the things Shane, that you would have to be cognizant of, of course, would be meeting lab requirements for the N C double A requirements. And it just might not be totally possible to do it a, a virtual class. I'm thinking of chemistry, physics, biology, those kinds of things that have specific requirements and specific hours in the lab.
Absolutely. And you know what's great is we have really good partners with our region universities and DMAC. They've been really good about working with us and seeking input and feedback and coordinating our work together so we can create the best situation so that kids can meet those requirements, accumulate those R E I points so that they're in good standing going off to the universities.
And, and not to forget, if we have student athletes that would like to continue, they need to have all those credits approved.
Absolutely.
I've got kind of a weirdo question and it's more for Robin. So the, looked like the data on transportation was about 20% of the students would travel by bus. How does that compare to like our normal transportation, Robin? And then if you would know kind of projection on like, you know, financially, is this going to have an impact? Is it more or less?
Our typical ridership is about 33%. So if we could assume that data, then we're going to be down a little bit. In terms of revenue, that would be an interesting point that I would have to look into.
And I was actually, before you asked your question, Liz, after Shane had shared, when, when we know those numbers and we know what kids need if they are fully online and we have to get creative, we have to consult with transportation too, so that that is an opportunity for all and see what we actually can have the capacity to do. And I know that's a hard, I know that's a question we keep getting and it's hard because we don't have a solid answer, but we know it's really important. And being solution oriented and thinking differently is going to be really important.
Well, and I would just kind of circle back to the 68% who are going to be, you know, taken by car by their family. And the challenges that we have for parent drop off and pickup at some of our schools is going to be an opportunity for more of a creative approach, but also a lot of collaboration from our neighbors and our city partners. Especially I'm thinking around the Stillwell area, if we're going to have, you know, 68% of those students likely to be coming by car, what kind of traffic situation that might be?
Thanks for those comments, Liz. So as we continue moving on with our district recommendations and we talking about busing, I wanted to share with you our bus mitigation strategies. So hopefully you can see those as I'm. So you can see that, again, health and safety is very important to us so that we would require the, the facial covering when getting on the bus, riding the bus, exiting the bus. We'll, we'll definitely, you know, when we think about those who may not be following those guidelines, we will definitely have conversations with families about that. I should also state that in, in working with legal, that there are health reasons as well as religious reasons why someone might not, or why someone would be exempt from face covering. So we have to remember that would be a possibility for some of our kids. We're going to ask siblings to sit together when appropriate. Students will enter the bus and start filling from the back of the bus forward and then exiting from the beginning to the, so closest to the front, to the back. We will definitely sanitize those high-touch areas throughout the school day. And then, you know, monthly we'll deeply sanitize those buses as well. And then when you think about our drivers, because we have to think about their health and safety as well. Robin's done a nice job of thinking through. We will provide again face shields to all of our employees, but to our drivers as well. We will ask them to wear face coverings when students are loading and unloading the bus. But we are, this is just a little adjustment to that, that we will have that use for a face covering, the optional to drivers when the bus is in motion. So as they're driving, if they're wearing the, a face mask or a face shield or one of those coverings and that posed a concern as they're driving, they would be able to take it off when driving, but then they, once stopped, they'd have to put that, that back on. So. And that other mitigation strategies that you can see, you know, and looking at the time, we, we've walked through those mitigation strategies for in-person learning. We really want parents to monitor for their own sons and daughters, the different COVID-19 symptoms, making sure they're taking their student's temperature, encouraging not to come to school if you're, you're feeling ill, knowing that face coverings are, are required. We will space students afar, as far apart as possible in each of our classrooms, maintain social distancing when, when possible. And when we say that, we're talking, you know, that really larger six feet. We are looking at adding lunch, because we know that you're, we'll all have to take off our face coverings when we're eating. So adding lunch shifts to reduce the number of students who are eating lunch at one time. Also looking at the possibility of eating in classrooms at certain levels of our, of our schools as well. Dr. Seid, anything to add more around mitigation strategies?
Thank you. And I want to make sure that we understand that for our employee's safety as well, that's obviously a priority. Anytime we have a public facing employee, we have the Plexiglas barriers that are established so that we can make sure that we reduce the likelihood of exposure. The other piece that is really, information that's provided from the Department of Public Health, Polk County, Iowa, as well as the CDC, is, is really training around preventative measures, hand washing, how to wear P P E appropriately. And when I say P P E, it's the, the protective physical equipment that we have been talking about face coverings. How to, you know, if you're, if you are coughing or sneezing, you do that into your elbow or, you know, those kinds of things are also a big part of the mitigation as prevention, preventative measures. So I wanted to make sure and mention that too. So thank you.
Hey, real quick, just, and I know that these documents continue to get made. So on that last page, it talked about that face covering is required if unable to social distance. So I just want, I think, just so parents understand and teachers, it, that's not, it, it's going to be required even if the social distancing measures in place. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, Jeff. So we are requiring face coverings for onsite, even, even in classrooms that, if we would be 50%, for example. Yes.
Lisa, this is Jill while we're on face coverings. I think I've had a couple of questions from people about the difference between face coverings for the little, I think we call them little ones and the older ones. Are we going to talk about that? And then who's providing the face masks, shields, coverings?
Yeah, thanks for that question, Jill. So we, you know, we have face shields. We have, we are purchasing for all staff. So we have face shields to hand to every staff member. In fact, I received mine today. And we are also saying to our staff, if you prefer a face mask or a gator, we'd prefer that you provide that yourself so that you can take that home and wash that. So I'm thinking of our adults there. And then for our students, we are providing the face shields we've determined from preschool through sixth grade. So for all of our elementary, we will have some extras, but for seven through 12, we really are asking that our students at the secondary level wear that face mask or again, the gator or a bandana piece. And again, we are hoping that our families would provide those, but we will have some that we could provide to families who need those as well. And Dr. Seid, I don't know if there would be anything that you would need to add to that?
No, you, you covered it. Thank you very much. Lisa, just a question about the shields that are provided for the young staff, young, young students. Will those remain at school and then, and will, they will be sanitized overnight? Is that how we're thinking about that?
Yeah, thank you for that question, Dr. Poole. So yes, so the face shields at the elementary will remain at school in the classrooms and be cleaned overnight. So we would also be saying that as, if you're a bus rider, make sure that you have your mask that you could wear on the bus because we would require that on the bus. So we, as we talk to families and send out more specific information to families, that, that we would want our bus riders to be thinking about that as well. But yes, the face shield will stay at school.
Lisa, follow up to that. Who is responsible for cleaning those?
I'm going to look to Dr. Seid.
So in working with our Director of Operations, she would provide the cleaning supplies and we would ask our teachers to do that or a staff member to be able to do that if the custodian can't. Assuming that the custodian, because of the enhanced cleaning schedule that they will have, will need to be able to address those other areas.
So they, the teachers might have to do that, but they're not going to be asked to clean their rooms. I know there's some concern because custodial staff has been busy in recent years. And so regular cleaning hasn't been. So we have a plan to make sure teachers aren't going to be expected to do that, correct?
Yes, there are times that they will have opportunities. So if they, for example, if there's a, in between classes, in between cohorts, there is a, there would be cleaning supplies that would be able to be sprayed and wiped down in addition to the regular and enhanced custodial's schedule for cleaning.
So I don't know, Jeff, if this will get to what you were asking earlier, but as we think about our recommendation for hybrid option two, and really any, any option would be the same, that there's work to be done after that option is approved or if we move forward. So we know that building level teams will be developing their return to learn implementation plans that would be in alignment with all of the district expectations. And then we will need to be communicating that information to our parents and families as well. So there's, there will be work that has already really started with some of our building level admin around very specifics at, that have to be implemented at the building level. There was even at one of our most recent administrative team meetings, you know, can we bring our building leadership teams in to be a part of that discussion? Absolutely. That's, you know, there needs to be some more alike across our buildings than to different, but that yes, definitely have teachers involved in, in that planning as well. And then finally, you know, I, I think this slide does it, says it really well. So it's, it's been where we've been, kind of that whirlwind since mid-March. But, you know, even with the board, if they take action, if you all take action tonight and we move forward with our planning for hybrid option two, there, you know, we're what, six weeks away from school starting? So there are a lot could change between now and then as we continue to have weekly meetings with Polk County Health. Recommendations could come where I need to come to you and say, you know what? We really need to change our plan and we need to start fully online or, or whatever it may be based on the, the situation at the time. So, you know, we could change direction based on what's happening in our city and our county. We could get new guidance from any one of those areas, whether it's Polk County Health, Department of Ed, the Governor's Office, any one of those that we've been, you know, I was told CDC is going to send out new guidance. So as we continue to get guidance, you could see that our team is coming back to you with adjustments to a plan. So I just wanted to make sure that it was understood by everyone that our plans are, will continue to be fluid. We do need a decision so that we can start putting details and get that ambiguity. We do need a decision so that we can start putting details and get that ambiguity away and start having more specifics. But we need to remember that we need to stay nimble, flexible, and that we could be changing at any moment.
Hey Lisa, this is Jen, and I'm sorry, my power went out in my house, so I'm on my phone. So if it's delayed, I apologize. I have a few questions, and I think they're, they're relevant to what you're talking about. And I apologize in the brief time I had to hop out if you answered any of these. One is, earlier in the presentation, you mentioned that you, with SF 2310, you have local control to make decisions. But the piece that I know you've shared with me is that, and it's in the documents, Polk County contributed, that they will help in collaboration and they offer recommendations. So I don't know if you came back and, and touched on that while I was out. But I think that's one piece that, you know, is good, good information to, to know. I guess my power just went back on. Sorry, everything in my house is blowing up. And then, oh, go, go that, but I have a few questions here, so.
So Jen, just to clarify, so are you asking about how we might make decisions as far as closure?
Yes, we have lots of people wanting to know closure. And I know that you've indicated that in Polk County's guidance is that you call them if there's a case and that they offer some recommendations and help and don't just leave you or us on our own to figure that out. So could you just, you know, maybe expand on that, just a tidge to put people's minds at ease?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. So you see in an attachment there, and the, and I put it in both places. So there's four different attachments that we received from Polk County Health late last week. And one of those does talk about, you know, the self-quarantine and when there's a case and so forth, and, and steps to take. And even have some sample letters that we would send home to families to notify and, and know that we, when we, when we do notification, it doesn't get to the specific individual who may have either been exposed or have symptoms or be positive. It's, it's really more general than that due to HIPAA laws and so forth. But we would notify when there is a case and that we would need to be adjusting. Now, I will say that we were kind of hoping that if this happens, then this is exactly the answer to that. That's the response. And what Polk County Health said is they can't share that with us. Not that they, they can't, it's, it's just that it depends. There's so much that it depends upon, and it depends on what mitigation strategies a district may have in place. And so, for example, they said if you require face coverings, they're, most likely their recommendation would be a very short closure or shutdown versus something large. So for example, let's say we have a student at the junior high level who we find out has symptoms and is test positive. The first thing that we do, our nurse has some protocols to follow. They contact Polk County Health. We get a set of questions that we're answering those questions. And then we determine, that's on the school board and, and administration to determine, you know, they'll have a recommendation to shut for two days, up to five days. Could be longer depending upon what mitigation strategies and what answers we have to those questions. And then we determine what that would look like. Now, there is, you know, the question about board meetings. And if the board is responsible to do that, boards don't meet on a regular basis and as often. So there is a policy that's, we'll be bringing to the board in August that if our Board of Education wanted to give that authority to the administration, to the superintendent, they could give that authority. And this is, you know, premature, but if that would be the case, it would definitely be one of those where I would keep the Board of Education in close communication so that they knew when we were shutting down either a classroom, or if we had to shut a full building. And then, you know, we also have to, we'll have questions about if there are siblings. And so if there's a positive case and then there were siblings that were exposed, that could then determine that we would have to close maybe two buildings or three buildings for two days or three days, depending upon that situation. So it is working in conjunction with Polk County Health, which we're very much appreciative of.
Okay, a couple more really quick questions.
I have a couple more, Jen, when you're done.
And I just want to remind the board that it's, we're over our time right now. And this topic will be brought to the board again during our superintendent's report. And then you'll also have a chance to vote on it. So I just want to be mindful to give people a break between our workshop and our board meeting. So if there are questions that you can hold to the board meeting, I, I would appreciate it. But go, go ahead, Jen and Jill.
Okay, I just have a couple. Lisa, what, can you talk about what the consequences are for SF 2310 if we go online anyway?
Well, so that's still up in the air. So there has been some wonder, just towards the middle to the end of last week. There's been some information that was shared with our superintendent group on Friday that there's been conversation that it's very possible that some new guidance may be coming that would tell us that we may not get full funding for students who are fully online. I did have that conversation again today with legal. And that's really difficult for them to see that that would actually be the guidance that is coming. You know, there's that, when I read that piece earlier where it talks about, provide that in-person instruction is presumed the method of instruction, that there's been different interpretations from the Senate and the House around that piece in the legislation. And that that's been the conversation. And so what we're, what we were told last Friday is more guidance may be coming this week from the Department of Education. But that would be, like, the worst case scenario that I heard last Friday would be that we would need to have students remote in at every level in order to count them as a full-time student. So it's yet to be determined.
Good though, situation like, like option one, would that also fall under that same umbrella?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so then my very last question, and then Jill, or we end, is just, can you just clarify then, when we're talking about, when you mentioned earlier SF 2310, you said that that ended up really driving the direction that we were taking now. Can you just clarify that if, if this was not, once you find, first, I guess we just need to clarify that we're not sure about this. That right now, as you've mentioned, there's lots of hands in the pot trying to figure out what this actually is. Is this, how is this being interpreted? Because we have different people within the House and the Senate. We have different, legal, we have all sorts of people, and the DE are supposed to make a recommendation in the near future. Their word on the street is that within a week, correct?
Yeah, we were, last Friday, we were told this week sometime.
Right. So if, if, if this was no longer a thing where we had these constraints in terms of any online, would that have changed the trajectory for your team in terms of which plan you would have put forth?
Well, so here's, I, I think I kind of shared this a bit at the beginning.
Well, I just, I just have a, Lisa, I'm sorry to interrupt. You guys have a, so if online learning is not allowable by the department, then we wouldn't have put any online learning options on the table, correct? There wouldn't have been option one or option two. It just would have been everybody come back to school, right?
True.
Because we're not, we don't have a, an online learning plan already approved by the Department of Ed.
Correct. So here's what's frustrating. You're, you're correct, Liz. So here's what's frustrating to superintendents. So we were asked by the Department of Education to put three plans in place, right? So a fully required online learning, a hybrid approach. And what would it look like face to face? Because knowing that we couldn't come back just face to face, like, we had to think about mitigation strategies and, and changes. So as we were going through that planning and, and that, those were all due July 1st, as was said earlier, we, our hybrid option, we only had one hybrid option, which was our AB model, 50% until June 25th, when the DE shared with us about Senate File 2310 that had just recently passed. And that's when we as superintendents went, okay, so you're telling us that we need to have all of our students back face to face? That seems to be counter to what we were just asked to do by putting all those plans in place. And so then we also had conversations at our AEA superintendent's meeting about, we know we're going to have families who, for various reasons, do not want to send their students, sons or daughters, back to school because of some underlying health conditions. So we started talking about how could we create a hybrid model that blends the fully online and the in-person? And so that's the, that's when option two was created. So trying to get kind of closer to what I think Jen's asking. So if Senate File 2310 hadn't passed or hadn't had the verbiage in it that it does, do, do I think we would have created a hybrid option two? It's very possible not. Like we, that's what really was the impetus for us to go to that next level and to have another option. The reason we got to this option as the recommendation was twofold. One, we feel like we are still meeting what we believe is the intent of the legislation. And because of the data that we receive from our families, I, I wasn't expecting the 47-ish percent of families to, to be comfortable with that fully five days a week face to face. So with that, that's.
On that note, really quick though, am I incorrect in understanding that chart? As 47.5 said they wanted fully back, but over 51% of our district plus our teachers also indicated it's not their.
Right, but Jen, you also have to think about, we have 18% that want the fully online. So we only have 30, what was it, 30? I don't have that in front of me, but 33% that want that hybrid approach of.
I'm just saying, given the options that they had and they each got to choo- choose, I'm just adding the ones that did not choose that they wanted fully. And when I add it together, it's 51. And I'm just asking if that's correct or not.
Yeah, yeah, I definitely think when you add those together, yep, I agree.
Jill, what questions do you have?
In, interest of time, do you want me to wait? I just, in general, I have some questions about substitutes, increasing our custodial workforce, planning time. And then just to real quick about special ed 504s. So those are the four areas, and I'm happy to wait till our meeting if you all feel like that's most helpful, or I can ask them now.
Either way is fine with me. I, I'll look to the board. Do you want a break?
Let, let's just, uh, let's go for it, Jill.
Okay, thanks. Lisa, I know I've, I've talked to you and, and so I wanted to make sure I brought it up tonight and just get your opinion on the idea of contracting with some subs to be committed to our district because sub shortage is definitely going to be an issue. And I would just encourage and maybe get a quick response on hiring subs for specific buildings so that we also don't have subs going back and forth in between buildings, which could be not healthy for students or for subs or other staff. And wanted just to get quickly your opinion. And if that's something we're looking for, could we expedite that before other districts maybe put subs under contract? So we kind of get the, the cream of the crop, so to speak.
Jill, that's my dream come true. You know that, right?
I do.
So we have had that conversation. I, I'm going to look to Dr. Side. She'll, she'll be happy to answer that question.
I would, we have brought that up at superintendency as an option. And we are certainly willing to look at that. We have already started to, Jackie Armstrong is the individual who typically works with our substitutes. She's been out, but she has been working with that group to see who is interested in coming back. She actually started that, guys, before, back, well, back before March, so since the first of the year. We have, she was directed to, to do that. So we're also reaching out again to all of the substitutes that we currently have, sharing our plans, our support opportunities, our mitigation strategies, and asking them to let us know, either way, if they are comfortable coming back into our district as a substitute so that we can welcome them and provide them support. Or if they are not willing or able to at this time, we'd like to know that as well. So we, we are pursuing those, both of those, those opportunities. Looking at the potential for contracted subs as well as making sure that we know exactly who is remaining in our pool and who is not.
And just to add on to that, I think, you know, an all-hands-on-deck approach is going to be necessary. And looking at instructional coaches and curriculum leads or other people who may be not assigned and being flexible, like having them maybe be paired up with a building. So again, we're not sending people into a variety of buildings, but they, we have, you know, a few people that are go-to backups in those buildings just to assure less crossing across buildings.
Lisa, could you talk a little bit about the guidance you got from Carrie Lovetta Townsend, the infectious disease nurse at Polk County, about cohorting buildings, just for general knowledge of the group?
Sure. You know, it, it's kind of like I was talking about with recess. So as much as we can cohort not only our students but our adults, that really helps when we think about when we have positive cases and the, the number of buildings that we may have to close for that two to five days. So the fewer people we have going from building to building, that is a better mitigation option than having multiples involved in all of our buildings, if that makes sense. Jill, you had a question around custodial?
Yeah, are we looking, I know in FNF, we talked about outsourcing some extra custodial staff. Well, though, and Christine, maybe, I just, I'm, maybe slow to put it together. I'm assuming they'll be in buildings helping clean since there's more to do every night. Is that how we see those extras custodial? Are we looking to hire some additional custodial folk?
Well, there's several contracts on the board agenda. And the majority of them are around some COVID response, cleaning and sanitation. We're looking at three levels of sanitation. One is we're contracting out a, I want to say it's, it's basically a coating that stays, lasts about two months and inhibits microbial growth on, in all of our attendance centers and our support buildings as well. We're also looking at a daily disinfection, and that is something that we would be contracting out. There is also a contract on there to do some sanitation on our buses. You'll see all of those on the agenda tonight. As far as our internal staff, we're looking at changing schedules up a little bit, especially for our first shift custodians, since we do see that, that touch point disinfection is going to be extremely important while we have students and staff in the buildings. So we're looking at changing the shift, changing some of the responsibilities to make sure we get that touch point disinfection. To speak to just general custodial, that's going to be what our second shift does. They will not have any additional sanitation on their list. So we really don't see our building suffering. Another contract that's on the board agenda is around our substitute custodians. And we do intend to rely heavily on them to keep our custodial cleaning up to expectations or maybe even improve it a little bit. That disinfecting that I was talking about that's going to happen on a daily basis will happen on.
Perfect, thanks. And Lisa, I've had a lot of questions, and I'm sure you have as well about planning time. I think, you know, it's just an anxiety, teachers feel like, you know, unfortunately, it's one of the things that, you know, in a pinch, sometimes goes. But for the stress and mental health, you know, it's really important that teachers do get breaks and get some time to just gather their thoughts and prep for the next day, whatever it might look like. Could you maybe talk a little bit about the goals around planning time and how it might look different, elementary and secondary?
Yeah, so I, secondary is a little bit easier to talk about due to the, just the nature of the schedules. And when I'm scheduled to have classes and then I have my free period, right? So their, their planning time should look similar to as it does currently. I don't, I don't see, and Michelle or Shane, tell me if I'm off base there because we haven't spent a lot of time on the secondary planning time. Okay, so that, that should look similar as it does currently at the elementary level.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lisa, I was just going to add that within the required continuous learning plan, and I know we're talking about option two, that is definitely a consideration at both levels, for sure.
Right. And then at the elementary level, you know, think about the, I'm thinking about the onsite. And so we know that in order for our elementary teachers to get their planning time, that would be when students are in the building, that means that there has to be specials. So when students are going to specials, and let me explain what specials are. So music, art, PE, I feel like I've forgotten one, art, music, PE. Anywho.
Counseling?
Well, counseling, they, they do have counseling when in the classroom, but.
Spanish, media.
Thank you, Lee. I knew, I knew there was one I was missing. So, and it, and that's what I used to teach, believe it or not. It has nothing, yeah, anyway. So those, but that's when our elementary teachers get their planning time. And so the idea of, would they have planning time if, if we either didn't have specials, for example, or if we had specials in the classroom? So we started that conversation around. So we started that conversation around specials today at our return to learn team. And, you know, it really was, we do believe it's important for a couple of reasons, not only for our staff so they have planning time, but that's hugely important. But also for our kiddos to be able to participate in music and art and PE and in those, those specials that we feel that's important for kids. So we started that conversation about how can we make sure that can happen in a, a really responsible and safe way? And so then, you know, my thinking was for like art, using art as an example, having that in the classroom. But then we had a teacher email, Michelle, and really give, really some great examples about what mitigation strategies she could put in place in order to ensure safety in her classroom for, for those kiddos to be able to come to the art classroom versus her going into the classroom. And, and her feedback changed my thinking immediately. And, you know, we're still in conversation with that full return to learn leadership team. But I do believe, based on our conversation today, that we will be able to implement some strategies so that our kids can continue to have those specials and our teachers can have their planning time. And I see Michelle is ready to.
Yeah, and in, in an option two, at that elementary level, again, depending on numbers, if we are shifting some teachers to be fully online, they would work through that virtual schedule, so they would have that planning time built in. And then we would still try to coordinate that time Wednesday so that all teachers are still working together as collaborative grade-level teams around their standards and assessments and, and instruction. I think that's important to know too. I've had a couple of questions around how will it look different if I make this choice or that choice? And I think it's important to know that our teachers work really closely together.
Perfect, thanks. And then is the, this is my last one, I promise. And then Liz, I'll be quiet for a little bit. The DE is coming out with some, as I understood, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe they already missed it, around special ed 504. They coming out with more guidance around that soon? And when would we expect?
That's a great question. I know Candy has been trying to monitor that closely, and she's working with all the directors across. And I apologize, she's not able to be with us this evening. But has continued to work on that guidance. They're in the process of updating the web IEP to include a section that's specific for IEP teams to go through a series of questions to really think. And then, and we would expect this with, with students and teams that are working on 504s as well, to go through, what do those accommodations look like? What especially design instruction look like within a virtual space? We've also had conversations around, you know, once we have clear guidelines and some of that in place, what might, what might be the need to provide some additional time or compensation for our teachers for the, the beginning of the year so that they're able to meet with families and, and add those accommodations or add those modifications to the IEP.
So Michelle doesn't even know this, but just hot off the press tomorrow at 1:00 PM, and the DE Zoom is all about special education and new guidance.
I knew it was coming out, but I, okay, perfect, thank you.
Just came in the inbox today.
I haven't even seen it.
Yeah.
All good questions, fellow board members. Lonnie, did you have any further questions?
I do, but I will wait during the other section. Unless, I mean, I'm happy to ask them, but I can hold them.
Okay. Jeff, how about you? Can you unmute for just a sec?
It was very wise, the, what I was spewing. No, I, I do have some questions, but I want to listen to Lonnie and Liz and see what questions they have and they may address mine.
Okay. Liz, are you wanting to hold off as well? You're good to go. Vicky?
I can wait.
You can wait. Okay. Well, it is 10 to 7. I'd like us to have 15 minutes at least to eat something. Does 15 minutes work for everybody? Or do you think you can, do you need 20?
15 works.
15 works, okay.
Yeah.
So we'll reconvene then at 7:05, if that works for everybody, for a full board meeting. It is a long one. So please do get a big glass of water. We do have a number of contracts along with not only the return to learn plan, but also our facilities project master plan. So quite a bit more discussion this evening. I want to thank the 257 people that listened in tonight. I'm sorry that you didn't have a chance to participate. It's just the way it goes with these. And tune in again at 7:05. We'll continue the conversation, okay? I'll call for a motion to adjourn the meeting, please.
Motion to adjourn?
A second.
Okay, thank you. Lonnie, motion by Jill, second by Lonnie. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, all those opposed, same sign. Okay, we stand adjourned. Let's go 7:06, all right? Thank you, everybody.